Celine City Council meeting to order if you'd be so kind to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening and myself, Mayor Marl, Mayor Protem Girbaugh, council members CO Dylan Delorco, Kamara Sulek, and Kraus. From city staff, we have city manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal is participating remotely, Treasurer Bennett is absent this evening, I believe. Assistant City Manager Green is in the back, Police Chief Hart is here, and I believe City Engineer Fordice is also participating remotely. To our guests in the audience this evening, we welcome you. We encourage you to sign in in the back. You may also pick up copies of the agenda on the back table. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Moved to submit.
Moved by CO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dylan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will proceed to my Charter sanctioned State of the City address. Good evening, City Council, City Manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, distinguished guests, and my fellow Celenians. It is an honor to provide my customary mid-year update, albeit a more abbreviated version of my January State of the City address. After more than eighteen months of uncertainty and cynicism, our nation ravaged by a global health pandemic, countless sick and dying, numerous businesses shuttered, and our friends and neighbors laid off and furloughed, our community has turned a corner. The sun is rising again, and Celenians are optimistic and confident about our future. Make no mistake, challenges lie ahead, and Celenians should continue to be smart and take sensible precautions. However, now is the time to redouble our efforts. We will not be deterred from the work at hand, which includes strengthening our community, making it more economically vibrant, and welcoming to all who wish to live or work in the Celine area. A vibrant, diverse local economy is grounded in strong, stable businesses, and the true backbone has to be small businesses. Our private sector not only provides jobs, services, and amenities, but also the revenue required to provide the critical services our residents rely on. Working in collaboration with Celine Main Street, Celine Area Schools, and our local Chamber of Commerce, the city will host our annual Small and Large Business Summit events, along with our third job fair event scheduled for October 2021. Also in cooperation with our regional partners, we hope to launch a bulk purchasing initiative, excuse me, and as I've expressed previously, it would also be advantageous to revive the Economic Development Trust Fund, thereby providing grants and microloans to area businesses. I was also pleased that City Council approved a recovery zone in the heart of our downtown, allowing our local shops and restaurants the opportunity to expand outdoor seating and amenities during the summer months. I am hopeful that area businesses, especially those in our downtown, will return to pre-pandemic hours, thus fully utilizing this important community gathering space. As I've expressed numerous times, our city's long-term sustainability is predicated on a policy I refer to as smart growth, or thoughtful strategic expansion of our housing stock, amenities, business diversification, and promotion of place and connectivity. This will grow our tax base, increase our utility customers, and attract additional jobs and services that will improve and enhance our residents' quality of life. I am proud of our efforts to support a number of new housing projects in recent years, especially the completion of Huntington Woods' Phases Two and Three, Maple Oaks, and Curtis Bluffs. Further, we have numerous projects that will likely break ground in 2021, including Layer Farms and Westgate Apartments, both along North Maple Road. Transitioning now to infrastructure, City Council and staff held numerous meetings over the past sixteen months to discuss the future of wastewater services. Consensus appears to favor growing in place and integrating new technology at our wastewater treatment plant in the coming years. Further, by every objective measure, operations have improved, and odor complaints have declined dramatically since the establishment of our Wastewater Treatment Ad-Hoc Committee, which was created by City Council in January of this year. Under the leadership of City Manager O'Toole, our ad hoc committee has provided necessary oversight and advocated for expeditious repairs of wastewater technology. And on the odor issue, residents are still encouraged to complete our online survey, our online forum, excuse me, anytime they experience noxious odors permeating from our plant. For the convenience of our residents, the forum may be found on the city's homepage. Also, as mentioned in past meetings, staff and legal counsel continue to work diligently to resolve an administrative consent order, ACO, with the State of Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. In fact, the process is close to completion, and City Council will likely consider a final ACO later this summer. This current construction season, the city will complete a number of important infrastructure projects, including the resurfacing of Highland Drive, Hillcrest Drive, and Lawson Street. We will also thoroughly complete an emergency storm sewer repair on Rosebud Lane, and begin work on the long overdue connecting sidewalk between Huntington Woods and the city limits. Additionally, the city will continue to make progress on the completion of our comprehensive sidewalk program. As many residents are aware, this initiative has been extremely successful, and has already resolved the vast majority of sidewalk deficiencies that exist citywide. The city's Rec Center Sustainability Task Force is off to a strong start, and on track to issue their report to City Council no later than the first quarter of 2022. Our Rec Center is a valuable public asset. Moving forward, we should strive for a facility that is well-used by the community, while not unduly burdening our general fund. Our risk mitigation working group has now transitioned into an advisory panel, and will assist staff with the implementation of key objectives until the end of this calendar year. Let me emphasize the point, this initiative has been extremely worthwhile, and will ultimately benefit our city in innumerable ways. As I have stated on many occasions, our first responders can rest assured that we will provide them the resources they need to effectively serve and protect Celine residents. On behalf of our city, I want to welcome our new fire chief, Jason Spurley, to the Celine community, and wish him well as he begins his tenure in Celine. I also want to acknowledge our former chief, Craig Heft, for his years of exemplary service and dedication. The Celine Police Department continues their forward progress to deliver police services to our community. The SPD is working diligently to attain accreditation through the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, formally entering the self-assessment phase of accreditation on February 1st, 2021. The Celine Police Department has already met 498 standards in policy, and is working diligently to demonstrate best practices. Our chief, Jared Hart, anticipates an accreditation hearing in February 2022. Also, the Celine Police Department Strategic Planning Committee will deliver a draft plan to the community on Sunday, July 25th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. here in City Council chambers. The Police Department will be hosting an open house, and the United States Secret Service will be on hand to provide child identification kits to parents. This will be a great opportunity to provide additional feedback on the strategic plan and meet with staff. As many residents are aware, City Council recently adopted our fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, and we continue to be good stewards of public resources. Celenians can rest easy knowing that we exercise the same fiscal prudence and strategic thinking that has been utilized this past decade. Moving forward, Council will continue to prioritize the city's infrastructure and legacy costs, specifically retiree healthcare and pensions, while continuing to maintain a healthy fund balance. The Code Review Task Force has done excellent work in recent months, particularly on the issue of medical marijuana, and I'm intensely proud of the compromise City Council broached, and the fact that regulated medical marijuana facilities were unanimously approved late last month. Code Review will have a full agenda this summer, including the evaluation of recreational marijuana, and work to transition DEI in the Oakwood Cemetery Task Forces into permanent city commissions. As I expressed in January, I'm so proud that City Council has adopted resolutions and approved the creation of a diversity, equity, and inclusion task force. Further, my office is connected with the MSU Extension, and the city will again host DEI trainings, including staff and any other interested parties in our community. Also, our changing demographics, coupled with the adverse effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, have brought to light the desperate need for additional medical and healthcare services in the Celine community. Our residents' quality of life is directly linked to accessible quality healthcare amenities. As such, our new healthcare improvement task force has been working diligently to rectify this matter. If residents have thoughts or would like to get involved, feel free to connect with Chairperson Don Kraus, Vice Chair Delorco, or the group's recording secretary, Jack Seale. Also, over the past several months, I've had numerous conversations with Mayor Protem Girbaugh, who also doubles as the chairperson of our community's Historic Society, about initiatives to enhance our city's historic assets. As such, later this summer, I will be asking City Council to establish a working group to evaluate our assets and recommend strategies for their preservation. Our municipally-owned historic structures and properties must be appropriately preserved, so that they can be enjoyed by future generations of the Celine community. This past June, the Assistant City Manager Mike Green and I participated in an annual check-in with regional representatives from DTE and Energy. As a result, we were made aware of new incentives to install electric vehicle charging stations. Of course, this will be evaluated further, but it is my hope that more charging stations can be installed. We must embrace this emerging technology, and continue to emphasize the importance of conservation and environmental stewardship within our community. As many are aware, our municipal website will be redesigned and relaunched no later than the fall of 2021. If residents or business owners have ideas on how we can best create a navigable, accessible city website, I encourage you to connect with our IT Director, Chris Schonk. I know he would welcome your feedback. Also, on July 13th, the city will be launching a new online survey pertaining to water quality. If residents experience uncommonly hard or cloudy water, this will provide them the opportunity to report their concerns directly to city staff. Our goal is to provide citizens with exceptional, clear water, and to correct deficiencies just as soon as they're reported. Finally, I'll be hosting my next mayoral coffee hour on Monday, July 26th, from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. at the Celine Area Senior Center. Special guests will include our fire chief, our new fire chief, Jason Spurley, and our new DPW Director Larry Searls. All community residents are welcome, and more information will be provided in the coming weeks. Let me end by acknowledging the years of service and contributions made by my City Council colleagues. Mayor Protem Dean Girbaugh, Members Janet Dillon, Jack Seale, James Delorco, Kevin Kamara Sulek, and Don Kraus. Also, sincerest thanks to our very dedicated and talented staff, who care deeply for this community, and provide exceptional service to our residents on a daily basis. On behalf of Council, we thank each of you. Our community would not be the world-class city it is without your commitment and contributions. In conclusion, if you remember one thing, may it be this. City leadership will continue to lead Celine forward, based on our strong community values of caring for one another, especially the vulnerable and those who are often overlooked. We have a vision, a focus on improving the lives of our residents, leveraging new economic development opportunities, investing in vital public services, and pursuing best practices for organizational efficiency. In the end, however, our city's greatest asset is our people. Celine is a special place because of the character and commitment of our residents, and that has never been more apparent than during the, that's never been more apparent, excuse me, than during the past year and a half. Great challenges remain, but greater things lie ahead of us. I continue to believe that our best days are yet to come. Thank you. May God bless you, and may God bless Celine. Thank you very much. Well, now it's my distinct privilege and honor to acknowledge or introduce our Police Chief, who will be conducting the swearing-in of Brian Wright, who actually is not a new officer. When did Brian officially begin, Chief?
Brian was, started the Police Academy on July 20th of 2020 during the pandemic. He was sworn in as a police officer on November 20th of 2020.
Very good. So Officer Wright, we regret that the global health pandemic prevented us from doing this earlier, but we are just delighted to have you here today to swear you in, and hopefully to share a few remarks and introduce some family and friends that you have with us. Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I do appreciate your time. Brian, why don't you go ahead and introduce your family who came out this evening?
All right, so here we have my grandmother Lynn, my grandfather Jim. Here's my younger brother Anthony, my other grandfather Percy, and my mother's right behind him. Her name's Teresa, and then my father, who took my name, Brian.
Want to share any law enforcement experience in your family?
Oh yeah, both of my grandfathers here, Jim and Percy, they both worked at Ann Arbor Police Department. They actually worked together before my parents were together. So that's a funny little story I always like to tell, so.
So you're keeping on with the tradition?
Yeah.
Yeah. So like the mayor had stated, this is a little bit long overdue. Our pandemic kind of put a wrinkle in our plans. We usually like to do these shortly after the first day of our new police officers. But just a little bit of background on Brian. He graduated from Lincoln High School, played a lot of sports as a young man. He attributes that and a strong family to his successes here in 2021. Brian, while he was in high school, was also enrolled in the Eastern Michigan University's Early College Alliance Program. So he was really doubling down in high school. He earned his bachelor's degree from Western Michigan University, and as we previously stated, he is the first person to ever attend to be sponsored by the City of Celine in the Police Academy. And he entered the academy on July 20th of 2020, and graduated on November 20th, 2020. So we're very proud of him for that. He has completed our Field Training Officer Program, which is about an 18-week program where he rides with a senior-trained officer, and his performance is measured every day against a scale. So he's done very well. In his short time here, Brian has excelled. He has mentored a couple of young adults in the community, has worked with Celine Area Social Service to get some gift cards for groceries for a young man whose mother was involved on a very tragic accident. So he's really stepping up and filling that role as a mentor in our community. And he also came up with an idea to put some sports equipment in the back of our squad cars. So encouraging his fellow officers to get out and kick a soccer ball, throw a football around, or whatever it may be. So we appreciate him thinking about new ways to connect with our residents. So he is a great addition to the Police Department. We're very proud of Brian, and I look forward to one day hopefully being around when he retires after about 25 or 30 years here at the Police Department. So with that, Clerk Royal?
Do you have a dog? If you'll raise your right hand, and then repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the rules and regulations of the Celine Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Celine Police Department.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a fully empowered law enforcement officer.
The duties of a fully empowered law enforcement officer.
For the City of Celine.
For the City of Celine.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Brian has asked his mother to pin his badge on, so we'll go ahead and do that. Not straight in.
Behave on the way over.
There you go. Perfect. Thank you. You did a great job. If I could have our sworn staff come up and surround Brian for the law enforcement oath Then I'll hand the meeting back over to you, Mayor.
Yep, take your time.
You guys all go ahead and get behind Brian. And raise your right hands. I'm my honor.
I'm my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold.
I will always have the courage to hold.
Myself and others accountable for our actions.
Myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
All right. Thank you all. That's it. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your time, City Council.
Chief, we do want to provide Officer Wright, do you want to share anything, Brian?
Yeah.
Please, floor is yours.
So like you said, I'll keep it short and sweet for you guys. Like you said, this was kind of delayed, so I've had the opportunity to go around the City of Celine and maybe see some of you guys around. I see a lot of people, so I apologize if I don't remember you, but I just want to say that it has really been an honor to work here in the City of Celine, especially for the Police Department, Chief, Deputy Chief, all the other officers, reserve officers, dispatchers. Everybody has just been overwhelmingly welcoming, and it's felt like I've walked into a hug at Celine. So I appreciate you guys, City Council, Mayor, everybody here. I apologize. But thank you guys for being so embracing and accepting me as a community, really. So, thank you.
Why don't you come forward, Brian? We're really proud to have you. Why don't you come forward and we'll shake your hand and congratulate you. Officer Wright's family and friends are welcome to stay, but I wouldn't begrudge you if you wanted to leave. So we're going to transition to the regular part of our meeting, but we appreciate your attendance this evening. We come now to citizen comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Let's start with those in the audience. Is there anybody in the audience this evening who'd like to comment on an enumerated agenda item?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jeff Weiss. I just wanted to take a moment of time and ask the City Council and Mayor Marl if you guys would consider supporting a resolution to the Washtenaw County Road Commission in an effort to help reduce the speed limit on Mccone, Macon Road, just beyond the Huntington Woods subdivision and the homeowners along that route. The speed limit just at the city limit becomes 45 miles an hour. All the homeowners along that stretch of Macon Road and Huntington Woods do not accelerate because they are going to be immediately turning left or right into their homes. And over the course of time, there's an incredible amount of aggressive traffic coming up behind us, high-beaming us, passing us aggressively, cutting in front as soon as they get passed. I have been in contact with the Road Commission about a year ago, and essentially was told that the Michigan State Police need to do an evaluation there to even consider that. And they told me at that point that they would likely, if the state police came in and did an assessment, they would likely increase the speed limit on that stretch of road, because one of the things that they're looking for is not necessarily safety, but what the flow of traffic is. So while that was discouraging, City Manager O'Toole suggested that the city perhaps send a letter and a resolution to the county in an effort to maybe perhaps that would carry a little more weight or some other considerations. So I would just like to ask if City Council would consider supporting a resolution along with the letter that we submitted about a month ago to see if we can reduce that just past the Huntington Woods subdivision, which is under two tenths of a mile is what we're looking for, for pushing that in both directions. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate your comments. Are there any other citizen comments on enumerated agenda items this evening? The record will reflect there are none. Clerk Royal, did we receive any written communiques in advance of tonight's meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we appreciate that one public comment from our friend in Huntington Woods. We'll proceed to the consent agenda now. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mayor Protem Girbaugh to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kraus. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move to unfinished business, item 21-118, Downtown Social District. I briefly discussed this matter with the City Manager in advance of tonight's meeting. So let's begin with just a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 16th, 2020 memo from Police Chief Hart.
So moved.
Moved by Kamara Sulek. Was that seconded by Delorco or Girbaugh?
Girbaugh.
Girbaugh, okay. Moved by Kamara Sulek, seconded by Girbaugh to acknowledge receipt. City Manager O'Toole, let me start with you. You were absent from our last regular meeting when we discussed this. There was a desire from council to have you weigh in, so perhaps you can share some remarks, and then I can yield the floor to the Chief.
Certainly. So I was involved in the conversations that were the basis for Chief Hart's comments in eventual memo. Myself, Chief Hart, Deputy Chief Radnick, and Holly Andrews from Celine Main Street did have a chance to discuss. I had a chance to review their proposal. Ultimately, the decision about, you know, whether or not this is something we want to move forward with, it's really about what aligns most with council's vision in terms of the type of downtown activity we'd like to see. From a staff perspective, we do feel prepared to address any of the challenges or the responsibilities that might fall on the city as part of managing this district. One thing I will note is, I did have a chance to speak with Ms. Andrews earlier tonight, and we do feel that tonight isn't necessarily the night to take action, because we are still waiting on final determination of the boundaries. There's still one outstanding question of who will participate, and the total number of restaurants that will participate, and we don't want to have to come back to the table to do that. So since we have another meeting in a week tonight, we'd really just like to address the few outstanding questions, and then hopefully take definitive action at our next meeting.
Very good. I also know that we have legal counsel on the line, so Mr. Forshee may wish to comment as well. Chief Hart, can I invite you to the podium? Is there any perspective that you would like to share at this juncture?
At this point, Mayor, there isn't. I took all the concerns that, as I understood them from council, sent an email off to Mr. Forshee and asked him to be prepared to answer those questions this evening.
Okay. Let me turn it over then to Mr. Forshee. Hang tight, though, Chief, because there may be some questions or concerns that are best addressed by you or your department. Mr. Forshee, are there any opening remarks that you would like to share regarding this issue before we, actually, I'm going to transition to our Main Street Director in just a moment, and then we'll transition to questions. But if you'd like to add something at this time, the Chair would welcome that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So social districts are designated by the council, and inside those social districts are what are called common areas, and those are the areas where it's a shared space where people can enjoy alcohol and traverse from property to property within the commons area. The city has to clearly mark those areas, and each business has to come back to the City Council and get approval, local approval, for that. And sometimes that's done at the same time as the designation of the districts, but... And sometimes that's done at the same time as the designation of the districts, but, uh, in any event, they have to get local approval and then, uh, they have to get approval from the MLCC. And it's, it's open to people that already have qualified licenses, which are just kind of your run-of-the-mill, uh, liquor licenses, not special licenses, but just the, the regular ones. Um, it has to be contiguous and, uh, I answered a, a series of questions for, for Chief Hart, um, and I'm happy to go through those too if, if those questions come up, uh, or I can address those whenever you, uh, think that's appropriate.
Very good. Well, let me transition to our Main Street Manager, uh, Attorney Forshee, and then when, uh, she concludes her remarks, we will do a, uh, a round robin of questions. Uh, Ms. Andrews, can I invite you forward to the podium and if you'd like to share a few brief remarks? I, I think you may have a PowerPoint presentation. Is that correct?
I do, but I, I, I don't know if it's, um, well, sure, why not? Let me, let me go through it really quickly. I just don't want to take a lot of your ti- your time. Thank you so much for-
Yep. If you want to take five or 10 minutes, I'll have Chris lower the screen and just as soon as, uh, the PowerPoint's good to go, you may, uh, you may start, and I will get out of your way, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. Let's see. Can you, yeah, do full screen. I don't know why. Get up here and I get scared.
It's okay. We'll get you going. And then you can click through yours.
Wonderful. Thanks, Chris.
Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for giving me your time tonight. Um, just really quick, we're trying to put together a social district for Celine. They have proven to be, um, create destinations in downtowns across the state. Um, and, you know, MLive just recently did a great article of, you know, where you can go to get to find a social district. So they are something that are, um, attracting people and visitors to their downtowns. And I've often said, um, our downtown, i- i- I wish that Celine itself could sustain our small businesses, but even before the pandemic, they struggled. Um, so we need to find ways to attract people from away, and this is one really great and fun new way to do it. Um, it's, um, as we've learned, it's the entire geographic area that a local municipality designates to be where special open containers of legally purchased beverages can be enjoyed. You know what the common area is, um, and this is where we've started with our boundaries, but we have not settled on those boundaries yet. We want to make sure, um, one of the things that I've learned is that in this setup, Salt Springs would not be able to become permitted. And I have spoken with Ron Scofield and they're, um, looking at whether or not that is something that they want to do, um, participate as a permitted business. The reason why it's set up this way, though, is we really have a lot happening on the south side of the downtown. I hate how this is. Um, and, uh, so what we're really looking at is a way to move people across Michigan Avenue and create foot traffic for the businesses that we have now on the south side. That include Rock Paper Scissors, Earth Elements, Enchanted Oven, McPherson Local, uh, and now we also have a small White Pine Studio and a bookstore that's coming in on east, uh, the, the, the north side of East Michigan Avenue as well. Um, a- as I said, there are over 40 places. I actually think there are now up to 60 places throughout Michigan that are successfully operating social districts, and the models that I used were Mylan, Wyandotte, and Adrian. Um, Mylan signs include directions on how to experience their, what they call MOSA, the Mylan Outdoor Social Area. Um, the signs are used to designate boundaries and they include a QR code that links, um, to their district map and additional info and rules. Um, but this is exactly what you see at the end, um, and it's, it's, it's been quite successful in, in helping people, uh, know exactly where the boundaries are. Um, and again, the QR code, and this is their map. Um, you could see, you have to have at least two, uh, businesses that are licensed liquor establishments, um, that are contiguous to, uh, the common areas and, uh, within the, um, social district. So this is why we want to make sure that Salt Springs Brewery, if they do want to take part, are within the social district boundaries that we establish. Um, but this also, uh, by including, um, you know, Michigan Avenue and going to the north side, we wouldn't be able to do it on the north side without, um, at least Max and/or Brecken Grill and/or Smokehouse 52. Dan's couldn't do it on their own, and we want them to be able to participate in the recovery, um, measures as well. Um, this is their drink. It's clearly designated as a MOSA drink, um, and Fenders is the establishment you can see on the other side of the beverage. Um, and then downtown Adrian, the way that they were able to get around a MDOT permitting process for signage is they just laid a line down on the sidewalk, and it's a really simple, clear way to designate, uh, commons area. Um, so this is their downtown Adrian, um, refreshment area or DARA, and that's their social district map. You can see it's quite big. Uh, downtown Wyandotte's social district map is also interesting and complicated, um, but works for them. And they, um, this is Chief Hart actually found this beautiful signage, um, and plan that Wyandotte has online, um, to just show how they went about, um, designating their boundaries and their glasses. On the right is the, um, the company, the licensed liquor establishment, their logo, and on the left is the, um, downtown social district. Um, so what we've learned more than, as I said, it's now up to 60 downtown social district plans and model paper trails to draw from, that we, we don't have to start out from scratch. Um, we can learn from what works best with them, which Chief Hart has already started to do, and I appreciate so much. Um, we know that they've proven to serve as a lifeline to many businesses in the wake of various pandemic shutdowns. Um, and they've become so popular that many cities want to make these special areas a permanent part of their downtowns. We do know that you're also, um, we can revoke it if it's not working out, um, if it's not something that we want to continue. This isn't something that once it's enacted is, um, permanently, uh, there. So we came up with kind of a kicky name, Soho North Side, Celine's outdoor hangout. It's meant to help brick and mortars, move people throughout the downtown, get them to cross Michigan Avenue, which we don't see at all, especially during our Thursday Night Music Series. Um, we'd love to see people have an incentive to cross and go shopping, um, and, and we want to join the successful movement. We want to try something new and fun to create a destination. Um, so again, this is Umbrella Square, which trans wife Andrea, uh, Worthing, she created that logo on the left for Umbrella Square, um, and then Soho North Side, so that we have both sides of Michigan Avenue, um, to visit downtown Celine and create a destination.
Thanks, Holly. Um, Director Andrews is the city manager, correct? Um, are you still kind of finessing the, the boundaries a little bit and would like to reserve, um, or would like to hold off on getting our approval?
Yes, absolutely.
So again, unless there's objection, we will just be entertaining the motion to acknowledge receipt, and then this will reappear as an en- an enumerated action item at our next meeting, which should be a week from today. Um, however, um, we will do a round robin of questions, and you can direct your questions to the city manager, Police Chief. Um, Chris, if we could actually take down the PowerPoint so we could have, uh, Tom reappear, because people may have legal questions, or of course, director, uh, questions for, uh, Director Andrews. Um, Councilmember Kraus, can I start with you, and I'll work my way across the dais and end with Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Sure, thank you. Uh, Holly, if you could, just a quick question for you, and then one for Chief Hart as well. So just so I understand, if Salt decides that they want to join because it's contiguous, would that mean the entire chunk from McKay to Henry would be the social district, since it has to be contiguous?
So, um, everything that we will take into account, um, will have to do with existing liquor licenses, um, how it will, um, work alongside Umbrella Square in the safest, clearest way. Um, and it won't have to be a huge chunk. Um, I think as you saw on, um, I think it was Wyandotte, y- you know, w- w- we can draw it the way it best serves our downtown and your needs as well.
Okay, so if Salt did join in, does it still have to attach to Michigan Avenue somehow than to attach to the north side?
Yeah, they, it, it all has to be contiguous. Yeah, it has to be, um, consistent.
I wanted to check. Thank you. And then Chief Hart, please? I, I had several requests from residents, just their, their concern, they're not opposed, but, um, the, the coverage for the police department, if you could just, again, confirm, we're going to have reserve officers helping, and so the road control, will they be actively involved if they're not needed in that coverage?
So a reserve officer has to go out with a sworn police officer. They're not sworn and licensed as a police officer, so they would have to go together. And also would use our, um, VIPS teams, our volunteers. I'm hearing more about the stretching this down to Salt, have concerns about that. I just signed off on the Summer Fest, uh, liquor license, and one of the questions was, is this adjacent to social district? So I think need to be very mindful moving forward, and maybe it's more of a question for Tom, but I've already signed one document and I know another one's coming for Oktoberfest. So that creates some issues, and I believe Mr. Seo had asked the question, someone's going to go down to Salt, walking down the sidewalk, not be able to go into, you know, a commons area for Umbrella Square, you know, where the road's, um, blocked off. And I could see some definite issues with that. So I, I think it would be cleaner if we can get some of the other restaurants, uh, maybe barbecue or Brecken or someone else to co-sponsor this with, um, with Dan's on the LCC side.
That's exactly where I was going with that, because I'm trying to picture the logistics of all of that with, with Salt, and then coverage for the officers. So if you've got a reserve officer plus a sworn officer, who does that leave on the road for the other ends of town then? So that's just a concern that can, keeps coming up and-
Sure. I mean, I could tell you in the last week, we've been out with people walking around with beers, crossing Michigan Avenue, and we deal with that anyway. Um, so, I mean, these are just calls for service that we have, but-
So you're not necessarily concerned as long as the, um, the, the logistics of where it's going to be can get ironed out in a manner that is comfortable for you?
Well, yeah. I mean, obviously, first hearing about this, being the police chief, the easy answer is no, right? And, but we're trying to lean in and find ways to help our businesses out, uh, and when I reached out to my colleagues across the state, um, albeit a new program, they, their fears didn't come to fruition. So I think one of the first hurdles for me to overcome is, is thinking this is Summer Fest all the time around the social district area. And I just wonder how many people will actually even take us up on walking around with a beverage, but I guess that's to be seen.
Okay, well, it's good to know you're already thinking about it, so that's all I have for right now.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Kraus. Um, Councilmember Delork, any questions for staff, our guests, or legal counsel?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, thank you, Mayor. My question is for our legal counsel, Mr. Forshee. The, the reason we, um, tabled this discussion to, uh, the subsequent council meeting was so we could get some opinions from our, our, uh, city attorneys on what this means for the liability of the city to absorb and how that's played out in, um, neighboring communities and municipalities for the liability piece.
Sure. Yeah, uh, thank you. That was one of the questions, um, Chief was interested in as well. Uh, as far as liability goes, um, technically, really, there's, there's no difference, uh, because, uh, the, the city still has governmental immunity, um, for many things unless it's subject to an exception, which really doesn't, uh, pertain to this activity. But, uh, basically, the city would have to do something grossly negligent, um, for liability to attach. Uh, as far as, you know, what could happen as far as people drinking and being outside and that creating more risk of, um, unlawful behavior, uh, you know, that's, that's yet to be seen. Uh, I, I personally have worked on a number of these, um, and I have not heard feedback that it turned into, you know, some, some kind of, uh, wild outdoor party that goes on 24/7. So, um, I, I haven't heard anecdotally anything, um, and so as far as risk goes, um, you know, I, I think that's more of just, we, we would have to see where that plays out. But as far as liability goes for the city, for if someone were to injure themselves or do something like that, it would be the same as if someone injured themselves on a sidewalk now. Um, you know, if there, if there was a bigger regularity in the sidewalk, that'd be one thing, but just by virtue of having a social district, you're not exposing yourself to, uh, really any more liability than you otherwise would have on the sidewalk and in those areas.
So introducing alcohol into the equation doesn't change anything in that capacity?
It may change things practically, but from a legal standpoint, as far as the city's liability, it does not.
Okay, and, and so the same rules would apply then, that where the liability attaches itself to the license holders, to the businesses, and the proprietors of those restaurants?
Yeah, so, um, like was mentioned before too, if, if there becomes an area, uh, that you find, uh, it's not for the public health, safety, and welfare conducive to continuing, uh, there is a mechanism for you to, um, terminate them. You have to hold a public hearing, uh, and then you can, uh, terminate those areas that perhaps are, are of concern. Uh, again, I haven't heard of anything like that, but i- it's possible.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my, my main concern there was that, you know, not all social districts will have a major thoroughfare like M- M12 running through the middle of it. So that could be a potential area of concern with somebody potentially being over-served, wandering into Michigan Avenue and getting clipped by a car, though. That's my main reason for asking the question.
Well, yeah, we, it's, it's a valid concern. Um, of course, the city is charged with, um, d- clearly designating where the commons areas are. So, um, as long as the city is making sure to designate those areas, uh, making it clear that, you know, people are not to be drinking in the street itself. Um, social districts can cross over streets, um, that's, we've been talking kind of about that, like, it kind of reaches out a finger out to a past, uh, a roadway so that it can be contiguous, because the law requires that they be contiguous. Uh, you can't just have one single business out, a bunch of outliers, so they have to touch. Um, so, but it, it does not a per se provision of, of going across roads. Um, so as long as the city clearly marks it and, uh, from a liability standpoint, they would be protected.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Forshee. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Delorko. Mayor Portem Girbaud, any questions for, uh, for staff, legal counsel, or our guests from Celine Main Street?
Actually, I think this is going to be mainly for the chief, but to clarify, and you brought out that issue about a social district connected to our Summer Fest or Oktoberfest. Do, does that allow them to take drinks from the function and go out into the street and walk across the?
No, no, it does not. No.
So the only ones that are allowed to actually serve alcohol, like, is our restaurants that have a permanent liquor license. None of the special events or that type of thing?
Right, and then follow through with the special cups and then ensure, you know, through the training that they're not over-serving someone that's coming in and exhibiting those signs.
Because I, I will admit, I've seen individuals that are definitely over-served during those, um, summer events, so that could be a concern if they're able to walk out and wander around with their drinks and so forth, so.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of enforcement, you know, where somebody cuts across the line, where they're not supposed to be, what is it, drunk disorderly or just avoiding, or what would they?
Yeah, I mean, it really would depend on the, the, um, the situation, and we always try to get compliance, right, through education. You know, you're not allowed to bring that, um, you know, your own beverages in, you're not allowed to cross this line with it. So it's more of an educational piece, uh, upfront. There's, just because you may, uh, consider drawing up the social district, the laws, uh, other laws still pertain. So if someone is creating a disturbance or doing things that they shouldn't be doing, breaking other laws, that does not stop us from enforcing those. But if it's, if it appears to be an honest mistake and someone is, you know, tipping a, a cup as they cross Michigan Avenue, that's gonna, um, require some intervention.
Or similar, if someone gets into a car and has a cup or whatever?
Yes. Yep.
The other concern, and just understanding a little bit more of what the additional expansion of the area is to be, is it just to Salt or is it more the entire northern, I mean, southern blocks or, I guess, the, uh?
Yeah.
I mean, before we have that discussion, maybe Colleen could address that. What's under discussion about the boundaries right now?
Uh, I believe the only consideration still out there is whether to extend the portion of sidewalk that would lead to Salt Springs.
Okay, so just south in Irving Street?
Yeah, and, and one thing I'll, I'll note is the, in establishing a social district, the city does have, um, jurisdiction over the hours of operations. And if for some reason we wanted to, um, exclude the social district during certain special events, it's my understanding that we could do so. Um, perhaps Attorney Forshee would like to add to that? Um, perhaps Attorney Forshee would like to add to that?
Yeah. And also, I, I was going to add, if there is someone utilizing a special liquor license for an event, um, that kind of carves out that area temporarily for, it can't, it can't be both a special event liquor license and a Social District at the same time. So, uh, the liquor licensee would have to comply with their special event permit at that point. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
So again, within their boundary, which is identified within their license, license for their special...
Correct.
Got it.
Yep.
Um, what was the other question I was going to ask? Oh, um, in terms of, right now, we have the street closed, but if we reopen that street, and it's part of the Social District, how does that work? When you have an open street, and people are able to go out and drink, and can they hang out in the street? Or is it changed depending on what you... I, I'm just trying to figure out and understand, because we may not want to keep South Ann Arbor Street open, or closed the way it is right now, in that, does it revert back to being a regular open street, follows all those rules and everything, that, and then it just happens to be within a Social District?
Can I...
Please.
Um, the Umbrella Square in the street is not included in the Social District, and it wouldn't be, because we don't want to mix that up. And, um, everybody has to operate independently and individually. So if you have a permit to sell a, a beverage for a Social District, you have to sell it within your licensed establishment. You can't sell it outside. So Dan's couldn't sell beverages outside, you know, of his licensed establishment. He, it would have to come from inside. And they can't, you can't take your beverage into another establishment's boundaries. You can only drink it in the commons area.
So if the Umbrella Square isn't included at this point, what are the two, what two liquor licenses are being requesting for the entire? Dan's and...
So, um, I, I believe, I mean, right now, it looks like Max Smokehouse and 52, I mean, um, and Brecken Grill are interested. So that is more than two.
So they can participate both in the Social District and creating this Umbrella District that is separate?
Yeah. It's a totally different license. The permit to sell beverages for the Social District is, is, um, separate, and it's also the glass that you get for selling that type of beverage that's to be consumed in the commons area has to be marked as a commons area glass, and it can only be consumed in the consume, in, in that area. The other beverage, the other areas where they were really, um, measured and delineated by the Liquor Control Commission, nobody, that is, it's just like they're inside, their restaurant.
But they're gonna, basically, they have multiple licenses to do these different...
Yeah. The permit for the Social District is different than their license to serve alcohol.
It sounds like we have something to think about in the future in terms of confusion of overlap, so just want to make sure. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Girba. Uh, Councilmember Dillon, any questions for staff, legal counsel, or Ms. Sanders?
So I do have a couple of questions, um, starting where we left off last meeting, which was, can the Social District boundaries be changed at any time, or once they're established, they're permanent? Has that been clarified?
Yeah, uh, yes, they, they can be changed. If you're going to revoke one in its entirety, then you have to hold a public hearing. But yes, I, I believe you, you have the power to change if, if there's a particular area that you'd want to exclude. Uh, depending on how big the area is that you'd want to dial back, then, I guess then we, we would look at, you know, um, whether it would be appropriate to do that by resolution, or to do that by holding a public hearing. And it would still be a resolution, but you just have to hold a public hearing beforehand. So, um, yes, they can be changed.
So it can be changed to increase it also?
Yes. Yep. You're not stuck with the original footprint.
Okay. Because that was something that we had talked about. Um, I do still, I, I'm trying to, the other question that was very unclear to me last meeting was whether people with a beverage can enter a business that's within the Social District?
No, they cannot.
Okay.
No. Uh, it's, it's, they can only be in the commons area, and by definition, the commons area does not include the actual, um, facility itself. So you couldn't, like, take a glass out in the, from one bar, and then go enter into another bar with it.
Can you enter into any business?
Uh, that would be subject to just normal, your normal law, as far as, there's nothing special, uh, that it, that it allows or doesn't allow you to do, um, by, by virtue of having a special permit.
So I'm very confused by that answer. Um, I apologize. So if I have my cup, and I'm walking down the sidewalk, can I walk into a retail store with my cup and be drinking it?
Not as part of the Social District, no, because that, that, that wouldn't be part of the commons area unless that's included in a commons area, which it wouldn't be, I don't think.
Okay.
So, um, yeah.
So I'm just trying to kind of put all the pieces together here, and I guess what I'm trying to understand is, where exactly is the benefit to this? Because basically, you're buying one drink from a bar, and then you're out walking, so they're not getting the benefit of repeat, you know, drinks for the most part, unless you're making the effort to go back into that establishment. You're not staying there eating. You can't go into a retail space. So basically, you're just walking back and forth on a sidewalk. I, I'm just not, I just, I'm trying to see where the benefit to this is.
So the benefit is, um, people are going out and looking for these Social Districts, so it's a, it creates a destination. And also, people, um, if they're waiting for a table, if there's a long wait, rather than sitting at the bar, and if the bar is full, um, they can go for a walk. And the way we've designed the Social District is, it encourages people to cross Michigan Avenue. And if the businesses that are there, the retail businesses, and the bakery, and the studio, and, um, i- i- if those businesses leverage that, there should be foot traffic, that they could, um, you know, whether, even if somebody can't drink their beverage, the largest you can have is a 16-ounce beverage, um, finish it, and then go in and shop. Um, hopefully, they will use their windows to really, you know, entice people to come in and, um, find something unique, um, or even have like a special deal going on that night. But yeah, it's, um, I'm hoping it's gonna, you know, Mylan, I, I'm copying Mylan. Jill Tuzley is, I'm, I'm a huge fan of hers, and she did it so she could move people throughout her downtown, and it's really working. And also, uh, the owner, Ryan, from, um, The Owl All Night, All Day and All Night, he said that he, um, believes that his business will increase, that about a third of his business will be, um, Social District business, so...
Okay. I, I'm just, at this point, I'm, I'm just, I'm having a hard time getting from point A to point B on that one, of how that whole process... When I look at other examples of districts, they're much greater in size than ours. I mean, you're gonna be walking a block in three different directions. I mean, this is like, like, like a 30 minute, like a 30-second thing. I don't understand whether we're just gonna have people walking in circles. Um, I, I guess I don't understand...
Take, take the walk. I did it just the other day, just to see how big, you know, the boundary was, and it's a beautiful little walk. And actually, we could do some things, like contests for steps, and numbers of steps and whatnot. But walking by the Presbyterian Church, and, um, and just walking along and doing window shopping, it's actually a really nice little walk. Instead of sitting at the bar waiting for your table, you're taking a stroll, and, or that, you know, glass of wine after dinner, um, you know, walk off dinner, and, and, you know, take a glass with you and be social. Like, it's different. It's, it's...
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess what I'd like to see then, are, are retail and our restaurants going to match schedules? Because right now, they don't. Um, and so if you are out at a restaurant after dinner, our retails are closed. So, I mean, is there going to be some sort of connection to those on, on a daily basis to make this? Because, like I said, otherwise, you just have people standing on the sidewalk drinking. I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, we'll have to give it a shot. I hope so. I, you know, I'm trying to create an opportunity, and...
I know. I know, and I just, I appreciate that, but the, if it doesn't work, it's a process to revoke. And so I want to make sure that if we do something, we're doing it to succeed, and we've worked out those kinks in advance. It is, is where my mindset is. And making sure that we, we have a clear path, and we have a clear understanding of what it is. Um, I, I also have a concern right now that the Social District is surrounded by parking lots, and how are we going to ensure that people are not taking their cup to their car and refilling? And, you know, the, the point is to bring business, obviously, to the restaurants, and that people are not bringing in their own beverages, and, you know, refilling their cup that way. I, I, I'm just a little concerned about that piece, because we do have so many parking lots that are attached to this.
Excuse me.
And, um, I, I'm just, the, the last piece, and Mr. Girba hit upon this, is that there's a lot of discussions centered around Umbrella Square. And right now, I believe this body has that scheduled as just a temporary closure. So to plan a whole Social District around something that's going to end in six weeks, I, I'm a bit concerned that, you know, what if that's not renewed for next year? Then you've cut out that portion of a Social District, and so I, I'm just not 100% sure, because we, we don't have something for people to do. When you go to Mylan, there's a park, there's a waterscape, there's a, a common area that's always there for events. And so there's always something going on. If Umbrella Square is not there, what exactly is the draw in downtown to that area?
Our killer food, our beautiful sidewalks, our gorgeous architecture, and our really cool people. Um, it's a downtown, and people love to come, and we have, we've been putting on live music, and, yeah, I, I love the square. You know I do. It's a public space, and I think that, that's a whole other story. But I think people are gonna enjoy this. I, I think it could be a lot of fun, and I think that it could be a, a business saver, and, and maybe it will change some, um, business patterns, you know, for our retail. I hope so. I'd love to see them have lots of foot traffic, and, and like to see activate the sidewalks. That's, that really is its purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, Mr. Gir, uh, Mr. Seo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess the chief alluded to a question that I had before, and that is, does not Umbrella Square go wall-to-wall from, uh, Brecken Grill all the way over to Max?
No. Currently, the boundaries are the road itself. Technically, the sidewalk café permit is what governs those other seats on the sidewalk that the two businesses have.
Okay. Well, then, that makes it a little better then. So people could traverse the sidewalk on either side of Umbrella Square?
If the district was extended to include that, yes, or in the future, when Umbrella Square was, or when South Ann Arbor Street was reopened, yes.
Okay. That's the only concern that I have. I'm not against the idea of trying it. I was in, uh, Grand Haven this weekend, and yesterday, I don't know whether they have a Social District or not, but there were a lot of people in the street, they had made, because they don't have the kind of streets we do in, in Celine, they were able to close a lot of their streets and make them one-way. So half of the street is now dedicated to outdoor dining and, and outdoor, uh, beverage consumption and so on. And there, there were a ton of people on the street. Of course, that's more of a, a destination, I think, than the city of Celine is. But, uh, it was really a wonderful atmosphere. It was very alive, and a lot of folks there. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not opposed to the idea overall, I just have some serious reservation about how City Celine sits on Michigan Avenue, about the safety of people on Michigan Avenue, and about what the Social District is actually going to encompass. So that's my concern.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seo, and we'll end with Councilmember Kamara Sulek.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of questions. Holly, can, can businesses pull, uh, so I'm thinking of like Ann Arbor and other areas where they'll bring like a rack of clothes out, or some wares, just outside their doors? Is, is, is that something that you've seen in other communities? Um, to like, to take a peek and entice people to, you know, finish their drink, or after they go back to the restaurant and, and eat, and then say, oh, I, you know, I saw that shirt, or something, I want to get that from, you know, rock, paper, scissors, or... Is that something you're seeing in other communities?
Yeah. And I think also, I, I, I'm hoping that that's sort of the, the thing that could, you know, be activated, um, just some creativity around getting people who are walking by to come on in. And, um, yeah, like I said, I, I don't think that, I think it's, I sort of think it's nicer for people to have a beverage while they're waiting for a table, um, walking around, seeing people, doing something different, um, rather than sitting at the bar. I kind of think that if you're walking around breathing fresh air, you're probably more likely to have a more healthy experience with your, with your drink than if you're just sitting at the bar and having two, one back-to-back, because you can't have them back-to-back if you're walking around.
Right. Maybe work up a bigger appetite while you're walking around, too.
Yeah, yeah. And it would look cool. I think it, I, that's one thing we don't have, Michigan Avenue kills foot traffic. It's just, it's, it's horrible on foot traffic. We don't see people just taking a stroll. So maybe this will create an incentive to do that, you know? We'll, we'll do some fun stuff to get them across the street, and...
Right. I, I see people maybe congregating while they're waiting, waiting for their table with their drink.
Yeah.
Or we have nice benches along the sidewalks to be, to be able to sit and, and hang out. And, um, Ms. O'Toole, could you confirm, are, are businesses allowed to pull some of their wares out onto the sidewalk, or are there, are there limitations, or...
Uh, there would likely be limitations, but, um, there's temporary permits that they could apply for to allow them to do that.
Okay. I, I think that'd be a good idea. The other thing that I'd like to remind everybody of is, so we have art around Celine, and so there are a lot of the beautiful art that, that was looked over and, and judged by the Arts and Culture Committee. So there are some fantastic pieces that are, are set, um, at businesses, and I think there's going to be some more put up that weren't necessarily top honors. So I think we're, I think we're on our way, uh, as far as beautifying our downtown, and having our, our beautiful streetlights, and, and banners, uh, that, I think it's worth trying, uh, and, and see how it goes. And after the Social District, um, I'm sorry, after Umbrella Square, uh, closes down, uh, that could be, that can be expanded. I'd like the, uh, the option to change it, either expand or, or contract it. I know it's a bit of work, but I feel it's imperative for us to do all that we can for our downtown businesses, and to make it a destination. And it takes steps, so I think this would be, uh, a positive step forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all. Well, in the interim, if you have additional questions or concerns, please direct those to city staff. And again, we'll revisit this issue at our next meeting, which is a week from this evening, and this will be a enumerated, uh, business item, and will appear as the, probably the first and only business, or item under unfinished business. Uh, with that, we do have a motion on the floor, moved by Kamara Sulek, seconded by Mayor Potem Girba, to simply acknowledge received... Gierba to simply acknowledge receipt of the June 16th memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. For the remaining new business items, I'll just be calling on you if you raise your hand. So if you do have a question or concern, please raise your hand, and the chair would be delighted to call on you. The first new business item is item 21-124, Macon Road Resolution. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 9, 2021 letter from Huntington Woods Homeowners Association and to adopt or not to adopt the resolution of support.
Move to acknowledge?
Move to, just to acknowledge?
Yes.
Move to acknowledge. Are you willing to second that, Mr. Seo?
I'll second that.
Okay. Simply to acknowledge. City Manager O'Toole, do you care to make some brief comments?
In reference to the public comment shared earlier, we received a letter requesting council support for the Huntington Woods Homeowner Association's efforts to seek reduced rates of travel along Macon Road from just before the start of their subdivision to the city limits. Included with this is a draft resolution that basically describes that. The intent would be that this was shared with our county commissioner and also, as I've learned now, our local liaison to the road commission itself.
Yes, I was notified by Commissioner Beeman that Chairperson Barb Fuller, who chairs the full road commission, is generally responsible for the southwest quadrant of Washtenaw County. So any matters pertaining to the road commission that fall within that geographic region should be directed to her. Other questions for the city manager? Councilmember Dillon.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I don't think you were aware of this, council received an email earlier this evening from Mr. Grossman, and he does make some significant statements about this change and referring to Monroe Street as a major street. And it talks about that it is in a transition point, that the speed limit is much greater, and then as it comes into the city, it drops to 25, and so that area is actually a natural transition point of lowering. I would like to know more about this as we're making this kind of decision, if this is the case, if there's a reason why this was that way. Maybe the speed limit was set long before housing was there. I don't know, but I would like to have more information of what the road commission's thought processes on this, if they're just looking for us to agree with them or if we're actually soliciting them to change their mind.
I believe, based on past communication, we would be asking them to reconsider their current position.
And then they would evaluate, likely conduct a study, and then render a decision.
Okay. I do, like I said, I don't know if there's anyone else that has had an opportunity to read this email and has any input about it.
Are there any additional questions for the city manager? Mr. Delarco?
My question is more for Mr. Fordyce, I believe. My question is, at the time Huntington Woods was annexed into the city of Celine to become part of our boundaries, was there any contemplation of lowering the speed limit on this stretch of Macon Road at that time, or were there reasons to recommend otherwise?
That was just as I was coming into the city as an employee, but I don't recall there being any consideration at all for that road to change jurisdiction, so that it was, I think, not at that time contemplated or pursued to take Macon Road and make it a city street.
Okay. So therein lies the conundrum. We have no jurisdiction over this speed limit on this road, and it seems an exercise in futility to draft any kind of resolution, to ask the Washtenaw County Road Commission to consider this. I mean, there might be a different way to go about it, and it would probably involve traffic studies where there would be an objective measure of analysis of the data to look at not just traffic flows, but safety and all those parameters need to be considered and I mean, is there a history of accidents in the area? Is there a reason beyond it being in proximity to a subdivision to lower the speed limit? There are subdivisions all over every city in the state of Michigan that are adjacent to major thoroughfares, and that in and of itself is not a justifiable reason to lower a speed limit.
Thank you. Mr. Seo and then Mr. Kamara Sulek.
Just in response to my fellow councilperson's statement, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, please, but, you know, if we were to take this action and to make this recommendation, I think it would bring to the attention of the authority who still is responsible for setting the speed limit there, that there is, that we would like some consideration because of the issues stated. There are a number of criterion for setting a speed limit, include things like the number of curb cuts in a certain stretch of roadway, the actual measured speed out there, the average, the standard deviation of the average, and I've forgotten exactly how they stated, but the average speed on a sunny day is taken by radar. So there are a lot of studies that need to be done in order to properly set a speed limit, and that would be the responsibility of either the Washtenaw County Road Commission or whoever the jurisdiction is responsible for setting the speed limit there. And unless things have changed over time, I think that's the way it is, is it not, Chief?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but it's strictly based on a speed study now.
I was just looking at the Michigan Vehicle Code today, and it still does have some exceptions in there, but those may be limited to within city limits. I also had a discussion with the engineering director at the road commission today, and he felt very strongly that they are limited to the 85th percentile resulting from a speed study and that at this point in time, he's stated that the Michigan State Police isn't even accepting other people's speed study. They do them themselves, and the 85th percentile is the 85th percentile, and that's what they direct the speed limit to be set at.
And consequently, the speed limit could go up, could it not?
Yeah, there's some preliminary data that suggests the 85th percentile might be higher than the current speed limit.
So suggesting the speed study or suggesting that that stretch of land be looked, or that stretch of roadway be looked at might be counterproductive to what the people would like, but I guess the passage for a solution would do nothing more than compel somebody to go out there and take a look at it.
Thank you. Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Yes, this question is for Chief Hart. If, are you aware of accidents or close calls, you know, angry drivers because you have residents pulling in to Huntington Woods or pulling out?
I'm not aware of any police reports. That doesn't mean that they don't exist. I do hear the comments from our residents in Huntington Woods, like all of you do during council meetings. I could pull up some traffic data, traffic crash data, and see if there's anything that's been documented in that area. And I receive similar complaints south of town, you know, going out by the curve, you know, as far as the speed limit increasing, you know, and residents trying to pull into their driveway or having close calls with fire hydrants on snowy days. So it seems to be kind of a theme, exiting or entering our community on the south end, on our major throughways.
And I'm a bit concerned as we can do the, start on the sidewalk connection project, that there's going to be more pedestrians and cyclists and everything on that sidewalk and with that speed, and it's, it looks like it'd be really easy to be well over, as we've heard, the 45, 55, or higher speed limit. That seems like it's pretty dangerous, but I don't, it doesn't sound like that's factored into the traffic study or maybe it is?
Yeah, it's pretty much...
Just cars?
As Jeff had stated, it's that 85th percentile of the average speed is how they set those speed limits. So there's always that risk. I know we talk about some requests downtown to lower the speed limits, too. We can really run into some problems. First of all, setting unrealistic speed limits is never a good thing for motorists, but, you know, that's why that study and the parameters are in place, so we make those scientific decisions.
All right. So we're in a tricky spot?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gierba, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to say, I mean, it's being requested by Huntington Woods, and we want to listen to them and present it, so it's just an ask. I do agree that the Michigan State Police process and policy is bogus because it doesn't account for real consideration in terms of pedestrian or safety in a community. And we've had that issue, as you just said, Chief, along US 12 throughout the entire city. How many times we've asked for them to reduce it, and yet they continue to up it every time they go through and do a study. So if they wish to have this perceived, we can go forward. I just hope that they do, they have the 45 and not the 35.
Well, to your point, the only thing they need to consider is how quickly they can get a car from point A to point B.
Yep, and that's always been our concern until the state legislature pushes back on it, and they have yet to do that, we have no control.
Any additional questions or comments, Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Mr. Fordyce, can you remind me, did we have a similar conversation on Maple where layer farms is going to be because that's a really like, isn't that a 50 zone dropping down the hill and it comes into like a 30? Didn't we talk about that at one point, and there wasn't anything we were able to do?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, there was interest in lowering the speed limit there when that intersection gets constructed, but there was no kind of rote answer to that. It had to be kind of an after the fact, let's build the intersection and then we can do a speed study and establish a speed limit.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, then we'll proceed to vote on the motion. It's simply a motion moved by Dillon, seconded by Seo to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have, and the motion carries unanimously. Is there consensus to offer a subsequent motion, either a motion to adopt or not to adopt the resolution of support?
Motion to adopt.
Moved by Kamara Sulek to adopt. Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution, supporting the request of the HOA to submit a resolution. Discussion on the motion.
I think it's important for us to take into account the concerns of Huntington Woods and our citizens, especially as that development has grown and there are a lot of families, a lot of young families that are going in and out of there all the time. I've always felt uncomfortable in that curve and the speed going around there. So I think it's worth moving forward with this ask at their behest.
I concur with Councilmember Kamara Sulek. I think we need to be receptive to the concerns and interests of our constituents. I think that the HOA president, his fellow board members and the residents understand this process, so we're all crystal clear that a lot of times these evaluations and studies don't work out in our favor, but I don't see anything inherently problematic with reviewing the data and asking the road commission to thoughtfully evaluate whether lowering the speed limit in this area, which again is very limited in its geographic scope, would be appropriate. So I will be voting in favor of the motion. Councilmember Kraus?
Thank you. Just, I just have a thought. I'm just thinking about it, the folks who are using that as an exit from town and who have always been using that, I call me cynical, but I don't know that they're going to be having done it for 30 years and all of a sudden, oops, you know? So I'm cynical on it, but I do think that with Mr. Weiss bringing this to us, that we have the, we need to be the voice for him as he brings this to us. Should this say something like, I'm just worried about the, how it says, like, are we saying it should be reduced in this? Because I do not want to vote that it should be reduced. That's not my call, but it should be looked at by the proper authority who is in charge of that?
You want to comment on that?
The language does currently call for a reduction, not specifically, I don't think it's our intent to request an outside speed study because we don't believe that that would result in the outcome that our residents are seeking.
But I also don't think it's my, I'm not a traffic expert, so I don't want to vote on something that says that it should be reduced. That's not my area. So I'm in favor of the jurisdiction who is in charge of that to take a second look, but I'm not going to vote to say that it needs to be reduced. I don't know that.
We could modify that verbiage. I don't view that as particularly problematic. Can I jump back to you as the mover of the motion, Mr. Kamara Sulek? Would you be amenable to modifying that verbiage, or would you like to move forward the way it's currently written?
As I understand it, it sounds like it's, that this resolution is to get the county to take another look at it. So I'm amenable to that because I think that they would, the intention is for, to lower the speed for safety. So if that point were to be more clear about the safety component, we could amend it.
City Manager O'Toole, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Based on what you're hearing from Mr. Kamara Sulek and Councilmember Kraus, can I empower you to maybe finesse that verbiage a little bit as we continue our discussion?
Certainly.
Okay. Maybe you can report back in just a few moments on what you came up with. Mr. Seo, did you have a comment?
Just again, to reiterate and to reaffirm what the chief has said, if the state police perform a speed study and the 85th percentile dictates that what they consider normally sane drivers on a clear, not rainy day, the average speed based on the 85th percentile is higher, they'll set the speed limit higher. They determine that the people are traveling at a lower speed, they'll set it lower. But what the state police feel is that traffic normally flows with due consideration to the existing conditions in regard with what they see in terms of the width of the road, the number of people that are out there, and our bicyclists that are out there and so on, and that people normally drive a safe speed for what they consider the conditions that exist. And like some people have said already, that on Michigan Avenue, when we've made appeals to take a look at adjusting the speed, they've adjusted the speed. They've adjusted it upwards.
Yeah, let me say this, and I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench in this whole discussion, but Mr. Seo makes an interesting point. Maybe I would ask Mr. Fordyce or Chief Heft, or Chief Hart, excuse me, or even the city manager to reply. It seems like if we were going to petition the road commission to evaluate this stretch of road in the hopes that they reduce the speed limit, at least in theory, it would seem that we would have a better chance of that occurring subsequent to this connecting sidewalk being installed where there's a greater propensity to see people walking, bicycling, rollerblading, which causes sort of a visceral reaction to most drivers, at least I hope, myself included, which is to slow down, be a little bit more cautious.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point. As Mr. Seo was saying, drivers do take into account their surroundings most of the time, and pedestrian facilities, particularly, you know, a reasonably sizable one and a brand-new one like this, I think will catch people's attention and slow a few people down just naturally. So performing that speed study after installation of the sidewalk would be in our favor.
So I guess, all right, so then it leads me to this point, and maybe I'd ask Mr., or Jeff, my friend, to respond. We're probably, correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, give or take about a month away from starting construction of the Huntington Woods connecting sidewalk. Weather permitting, that work should probably take more than two weeks. Is that fair?
Maybe two to four weeks, depending on how many people are assigned to that crew.
Okay. So, long story short, it almost seems like maybe we should consider this action and petition the road commission subsequent to that work being done, end of August, beginning of September. Does that seem logical, Jeff? Jeff Fordyce, that is?
I think it does. And I think the road commission would agree with that, that when there's a significant change coming in the roadway, that we wait for the study until that change is complete.
Does that make sense to you?
When I spoke to the road commission, they said the state wouldn't be there for all the year before they did the study anyway.
Okay.
I was waiting another month to set it in.
Okay.
I have zero objection to that.
Okay. Then why don't, God, I didn't mean to throw a monkey wrench in this, and I apologize, Mr. Kamara Sulek, but noting the comments that I just received from staff... Mr. Kamira Sulek, but noting the comments that I just received from staff, what I would move then is that we reconsider this issue. Move to postpone the matter until our first meeting in September. Can the city clerk remind me of the date of that meeting?
The first meeting in September is September 13th.
Okay, move to postpone this matter until September the 13th.
Seconded.
Seconded by Gearbaugh. Motion to postpone is a superseding motion. Sorry about that, Mr. Kamira Sulek.
No, it makes sense to me. I think that gives us a stronger case, so.
Okay. And of course, in the interim, if you had additional questions or concerns, you could direct those to staff. We do have a motion on the floor, moved by Marl, seconded by Gearbaugh, to postpone consideration of this issue until our first meeting in September, September the 13th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Little cumbersome, but we got through it. Moving on to new business item 21-125, resolution to appoint staff. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to approve the resolution as submitted, appointing staff for the period of July 1 through June 30, 2022.
Move to approve and adopt.
Moved by CEO to approve and adopt. I'll let Dillon be the second. City Manager O'Toole, do you want to make some brief obligatory comments?
This is just a standard operating procedure for us to, along with the changeover of the fiscal year, reconfirm our select staff members.
Very good. Questions for the city manager? Ms. Dillon?
Just quickly, every year we list fire chief, and then we say it's appointed by the fire board. Is there a reason that it's still in there?
That's a great question. I'm not sure.
Charter?
It may be.
Charter requirement?
Might be.
Yes, it's in charter.
It's in the charter?
Yes.
It's wide as mentioned.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments, discussion on the motion? Note, been properly moved by CEO, seconded by Dillon to approve and to adopt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 21-126, FY 2022, T-POM wage reopener. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 1, 2020 memo from City Manager O'Toole, and to approve or not to approve the memorandum of understanding dated July 1, 2021 between the City of Saline and the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh.
Second.
Was that seconded by Kraus?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, for council's benefit and for the public's, I'll begin with City Manager O'Toole, and then as you'll recall, and I think this came out of our risk mitigation initiative, but it was recommended that, beginning in this calendar year, that city council appoint a designee to work with our three bargaining units. And in January, you appointed Mayor Protem Gearbaugh to serve as liaison to T-POM. I serve as liaison to the sergeants and the police officers. So this is also a matter that Mr. Gearbaugh was involved in, so after the city manager provides some comments, I will defer to him if he would like to add any additional remarks. City Manager O'Toole?
I hosted three meetings with the representatives from the T-POM unit. We eventually came to a consensus to offer a 1% wage increase across the board. That's consistent with what our police officers' units received this year as well. In addition, they were interested in seeing short-term and long-term disability added, since they had previously agreed to the reduction in the sick leave banks that other units had approved. It seemed consistent with the council's goals to also offer that benefit to those employees. So this is the consensus we reached over that conversation, and it did receive support from their unit, and it's already been ratified on their end.
Excellent. Mayor Protem Gearbaugh?
I think considering the circumstance and everything with this approach and the reopener, I think, sorry, City Manager O'Toole came about with a good solution, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to achieve both the satisfaction of the members of the union and also to achieve some of the goals that we wanted to in terms of allowing for short-term and long-term disability. So this is actually an excellent approach.
Yes, it is excellent work. I want to thank you both and thank the bargaining reps and the members of T-POM. This actually checks a lot of boxes. One is providing our DPW wastewater water treatment employees and some of our clerical staff with short and long-term disability, and the wage increase, as the city manager indicated, is on par with what our other bargaining units achieve, or have been given, excuse me, thus achieving parity, which has been a longstanding goal of the City of Saline. So I will be enthusiastically supporting the motion and encourage my colleagues to join me in an affirmative vote. Mr. Kamira Sulek?
I'm very happy to see that it's consistent and in line with our other bargaining units. I think that's an important step, and very happy to see the inclusion of short-term and long-term disability. I think that's good for us, for our employees, plus retention and bringing good staff to the city. So I will be supporting this.
Very good. Mr. Delarco, did you have your hand up, sir?
Yeah, sure. I'm relieved to see us moving in this direction. It establishes continuity across the bargaining units for both the police officers and DPW wastewater treatment plan employees. This is something I've long lobbied for during my tenure as a council member. It was always a source of consternation for me that we were not able to accomplish this in previous rounds of negotiation, and I'm delighted to support this motion.
Very good. If there's no additional discussion, Ms. Dillon, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just very quickly, so Manager O'Toole, does this now mean that all staff are short-term, long-term?
That's correct. The, this will likely not take effect for this unit until August 1, because we just received the quotes, or are receiving quotes, but that is our goal, all staff.
Okay. And with that, they do now have the leave bank reduction requirements as part of that?
They actually had already previously accepted the leave bank requirement.
Fantastic. And can you just remind me when this contract expires?
The current contract expires June 2022, so we have one year left on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. CEO, did you have a brief comment, sir?
Just a brief comment to say that I'm glad to see that we reached a fair and equitable position for all the employees. So thank you.
Very good. If there's nothing further, we do have a motion on the floor, moved by Mayor Protem Gearbaugh, seconded by Councilmember Kraus, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 21-127, Paycor contract. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 2, 2021 memo from HR Generalist Getzmann, and to approve or not to approve the transition to Paycor for payroll in the amount of $34,196.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge and to approve. Is that a second by Kamira Sulek?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Elle, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Good evening. Thanks for your patience this evening. Ms. Getzmann, do you want to provide some brief overview of this issue, and then we'll open it up for questions?
Yep, just after working with our HR consultant, Sage, I, at their suggestion, we looked into Paycor as opposed to Paylocity. We've had Paylocity for about four years now. It looks like now we want to do some more things in terms of HR. So there's, as I mentioned in the memo, there's some recruiting, learning, and training, employee engagement opportunities there that if we were to add those with Paylocity, it would cost us quite a bit more money, whereas Paycor is able to offer us all of these things at pretty much the cost that we are paying Paylocity right now. So I'm pretty excited for the opportunity to get everything in one place for our employees and hopefully be able to offer them some more stuff.
Very good. Are there questions for Ms. Getzmann, our HR generalist? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, are the modules a yearly fee, or are they just a one and done?
The modules are, I guess it depends on which one, but they're going to be, it's part of that yearly fee, and it depends on how many employees are in there at the time for most of them.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Is this a, do we look at this annually? Is this like an annual amount that would be, could be adjusted next year?
Yes, in terms of the fact that if we have less, like, that's why there's possibly some difference in the quote and the amount that I'm quoting out, because we do have more employees at the moment. The $34,196 that I gave you is for 175 employees. We're actually higher right now with seasonal and part-time, but depending on if we have less seasonal, part-time employees, there, the cost might change. It might go down. But this rate that they gave us per employee is locked in for three years.
Okay. Well, it sounds like the value-added modules and processes that this provides us and locked in for three years is pretty straightforward, and unless, I mean, I don't see anything that prohibit me from supporting this. Thank you.
Very good. Additional questions? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Elle, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Kamira Sulek, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The last action item of the evening is new business item 21-128, utility rate study. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 7, 2021 memo from City Manager O'Toole, and to approve or not to approve the utility rate study proposal from Baker Tilly in the amount of $23,500.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Seconded.
Seconded by CEO. So it was a move by Dillon, seconded by CEO to acknowledge and to approve. City Manager O'Toole, I'll turn it over to you.
As you might recall, during our fiscal year '22 budget discussions, staff alluded to the fact that we had intended to perform a rate study in this current fiscal year. We went out to bid and received two proposals for services, one from Baker Tilly, one from UFS. Both are very reputable firms. Both exhibited generally similar parameters for this type of services they would do. I would say that the Baker Tilly offer went a little bit further in terms of the depth of the rate design services that they would extend to us. I also have prior experience working with them, and they were the low bid. So it is my recommendation that we move forward with Baker Tilly for that study.
Very good. There are questions for the city manager? There appear to be none. There's discussion on the motion. Easy enough. It's been moved by Dillon, seconded by CEO, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. First up is Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports from council. I'll just go from one end of the dais to the other. Councilmember Kraus, any Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports?
Thank you, Mayor. The healthcare task force has been doing a lot of work. It's the amount of hours that the people have all been putting in has been great, just amazing. We had a successful farmer's market event with myself, Bethany Lem, who's also from the task force, Jim here, and then Jen Harmout joined forces with us. She's on the environmental commission, and as we were trying to get people involved in the healthcare survey, she was also handing out more sustainable dog bags, which was kind of cool. So it was like a joint effort. Focus groups start this weekend. They're full already. The public is very interested in being involved in the healthcare task force and the mission that we have going on. There will be tasks, there will be focus groups through the end of August. If anybody's interested in knowing more about the healthcare task force and what we're doing, let me know, or Jim, or Jack down there, because we are all on that task force. The next meeting we have, Senator Irwin will be attending, and will be joining forces to try to figure out from a Medicare standpoint, like, what we can have in the city so that we get realistic on what we could bring in. So that will be good. Historic District Commission also met with nothing too exciting, just the normal things brought to us up in the historic district doing improvements to their homes.
Very good. Mr. Delarco?
Thank you. I'd just like to remind everyone's, for the public's benefit, that the Code Review Task Force is a public meeting, and the public is welcome to attend. We meet on the last Wednesday of every month, so this coming meeting will be on the 28th, and it's at 4:00 PM. I'd certainly encourage a greater public involvement in the Code Review Task Force. A lot of important decisions are made relative to ordinances that are passed on the city's behalf. We'll be finalizing some draft revisions on the responsible contractor's ordinance, and we'll be bringing that to council in the very near future.
Excellent. Mayor Protem Gearbaugh?
Planning Commission this week will meet to discuss the American soy expansion, which we're looking forward to having that happen in our industrial park, and then also discussing and adopting our final revision of the bylaws. Wastewater Treatment Plant, we've just been discussing some of the ongoing repairs and things that are going on. We did have an issue with the sludge lines between the north clarifiers, I believe it is, and needing to unplug those and everything, which may be a contribution to some of the recent smell issues that we've had, but we're hoping those will be resolved fairly quickly, and we're working with, I believe, Power Rodding to get that out. And other than that, the other improvements are still on track to be done. This will be in schedule.
Very good. Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. We'll start with the Parks Commission. It is summer, which means green thumb nominations are being accepted. So if you have seen a lovely lawn or property, or you have your own, you can self-nominate. Forms are available at salinerec.com, or through the city's webpage. You can either fill out the form online, or you can print it, fill it out, and drop it off at the rec center. Those are being accepted through the end of August. Also, the Nature Walk series is continuing. The next walk is on Thursday, July 22, and it is still National Parks Month. So get out and enjoy all of the parks if you can. Moving on, the next would be the Fireworks Committee. There was a lot of chatter about fireworks over the past Fourth of July, and there were a lot of questions about why the city was not having fireworks. When we started planning that event, it was several months ago, and to be honest, the state was still in, pretty much in a lockdown, and it required a lot of planning. There's a lot of moving pieces, and we did not think it was going to be plausible. What we did decide on is instead of canceling fireworks for this year, just postponing them until the fall. We picked October because we have done fireworks in Saline in October before, and it was extremely successful. The temperatures seem to be a bit cooler, the sun sets earlier, and it's a non-Michigan football weekend. So there's going to be a lot of information coming out. We're going to tie that into some other events happening at the same time on the property leading up to the fireworks. So be on the lookout for that information. And lastly, the Cable Commission. For those that were not a part of our earlier work meeting, the Cable Commission was the topic of discussion. And if you are accessing local Channel 18 and discover issues with it, have comments or suggestions about it, please feel free to reach out to myself. My email is jdillon@cityofsaline.org, or the city manager. When things are not working properly, we don't always know about it firsthand, so we appreciate when the community lets us know about it. If you have suggestions or comments, like I said, please reach out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Police Strategic Planning Committee, or Task Force, met again last week and put the final touches on our goals and objectives and the strategic plan itself in preparation for the open house. It's going to happen on Sunday, the 25th, I think it is, yes, Sunday, the 25th of July from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. So please, if you have a pencil, mark it on your calendar and plan to come by City Hall. Police Open House will also be taking place at the same time. We'll have a setup here in the council chambers where people can come in and view our work to date on the police strategic plan and make comment on it, and we'd welcome your input. So please, make some time to come down on Sunday, the 25th of July, to see the police open house and to assist the police department with trying to put the final touches on their strategic plan for the future. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And Councilmember Kamira Sulek?
Yes, a report for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. Unfortunately, the Pride picnic had to be rescheduled due to inclement weather. It has now been changed to July 25th, so there'll be Pride in July. It will be from 1:00 to 3:00 at Teft Park, and so mark that on your calendar. And then a couple other trainings that we're offering for implicit bias will be offered online on Wednesday, they're both Wednesdays, July 21st from 6:30 to 7:30, and July 28th, 6:30 to 7:30. These are facilitated by Chanel Guzman, PhD, Chief Engagement Officer of Global Engagement Consultants, and also sponsored by Stillwater Counseling. This is a good opportunity to have an initial introduction and some self-assessment into our implicit bias. So I encourage everybody to attend that. And again, that's July 21st and 28th from 6:30 to 7:30. Thank you.
Seems very serendipitous that he brings that up, because that would be a marvelous thing to have our new station manager for Channel 18 record and then put on Channel 18 and share on the web for people who are unable to attend but would like to view that material.
I second the motion.
Since we're talking about trying to expand programming and get relevant and timely things on Channel 18, I think that would be marvelous. Thank you. Are there other reports or announcements? Again, I'll go right down the dais. Councilmember Kraus, any other reports or announcements?
No, thanks.
Mr. Delarco?
None.
Mayor Protem Gearbaugh?
The farm will be having its yard sale on August 13th and 14th before the people come out for that.
Summer Fest weekend, correct?
Summer Fest weekend.
Very good. Ms. Dillon?
None.
Mr. Seale?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Nothing.
Very good. Well, then the last item is just revisiting the discussion item from, actually, it wasn't a discussion item, it was an item that was discussed as a work meeting agenda at our last meeting, which is the wastewater treatment sighting study. Again, the city manager was not present at our last regular meeting or the work meeting. Wanted to provide her an opportunity to provide comment. We do have somebody, an individual from OHM in the back who was here two, three weeks ago, and also Brian Rubel from Tetra Tech, who's a consultant that we've used frequently over the past decade on wastewater and water-related issues. Ms. O'Toole, would you like to begin? As I indicated in my mid-year state of the city address, I think there is still consensus to move forward with the grow in place, but I want to confirm that tonight and I want to provide the three of you one more opportunity to comment if you would like.
Yes, my takeaway from the OHM second look at the sighting study is still that generally speaking, the consensus is grow in place. It's sort of the least barriers in terms of cost and political capital that it would take to execute that path. And it's one that we're already well down at this point. In fact, we're well ahead of schedule based on the conversations that we originally had on the topic. And I don't think that there is anything substantive found in that review that gave me cause for concern to not continue down that path. What I will say is some of the other topics covered in that review are things that will be discussed at the Water, wastewater ad hoc committee level. And I think you can expect that any recommendations arising out of potential future Eagle compliance or our continued compliance with Eagle requirements are recommendations that will come from that group and be presented to council when it's appropriate and in the form that it's appropriate.
Very good. Let me transition now to our guest from OHM. Would you care to make any additional comments this evening? No, we appreciate you being.
No questions up here.
Very good. Well, we appreciate you being here and I'll state again for the public record, what we're talking about here is very profound in nature and requires a significant investment of time and human capital. So we need to make the right decision. We need to be very strategic and we need to be extremely thoughtful. And so I'm very pleased that the city saw fit, more specifically, city council, to engage a third party to evaluate our options. I think that was a good exercise and a good use of time and dollars. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make any brief comments this evening?
Sure. Well, good evening. Always nice to be here. Just a couple things that I observed at the last presentation, I think are valuable. I was very pleased that the consultant confirmed the costs largely that were outlined. And certainly, it's a goal of any conceptual evaluation that you budget high so that as you get into more detailed design and work, the costs, if any, changes go down, not up. So they presented an example of a pipeline where perhaps with further negotiation with government agencies, there is a potential for different materials to be used and the price to go down. And I hope that same philosophy would occur with the wastewater plant projects. As we get more into design, the hope is that as we learn more, the costs will go down. So there was a discussion last time about chlorides, in particular chlorides in the wastewater stream. And when I read that report, it seemed to be, the assumption was it was chlorides would occur as a result of water softeners for future growth. And that's true, but chlorides are salts, basically. They come about as a result of the softening process. What I'm not sure the consultant was aware, the city's long-term plan has been to provide the urban development area with softened city water. So I think the concern about chlorides increasing is not nearly as strong if you are providing softened municipal water to the growth areas. And in fact, everything about the chloride initiative at the state level certainly is correct. Having spoken to the state regulators about that particular topic, their goal for enforcement is to control the chlorides that come into the plant, not to require additional processes at the wastewater plant. So hopefully, that's going to be a lot less costly thing to comply with. And in particular, the best thing you can do is provide softened city water to the new areas. So I think with that, that's all I had to say tonight.
Very good. Well, why don't you hang tight? We'll do a quick round robin if there are any questions, but more important than questions, I'm looking for folks to hopefully reconfirm their commitment to the grow in place option. But of course, if you have questions, concerns, you could direct those right now to the city manager, our guest from OHM or our guest from Tetra Tech. Let me start with Councilmember Kraus.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I am in favor of the grow in place and will be supporting that option.
Very good. Councilmember Delarco.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Rubel. That's some important information to consider about the chlorides. I'm pleased that the ad hoc committee will be keeping a close eye on how we can maintain compliance with our NPDES permits and how we can move the wastewater treatment plan into a position of being prepared to meet the increasing demands and more stringent requirements moving forward with Eagle. And my commitment to our prior plan of expanding in place remains intact.
That was very clear. Thank you, sir. Mayor Potem Girba.
Yes, I believe this is the best opportunity for us. We know that it would benefit if we could have chosen with the occupant, but knowing the cost and some of the considerations for it, I agree with Ms. O'Toole that we don't have the time and really, we really need to move this forward. And I'm hoping whatever we can do is to leverage whatever is coming out of the new infrastructure monies and such so that maybe we can benefit at this time since we're already ahead of the game. And I look forward to this getting done as soon as we pass we can.
Very good. Councilmember Dillon.
Just to echo what Mr. Girba just said. Thank you.
Easy enough. Mr. Seale.
I'm a firm believer that the grow in place is the best option, given the costs involved and the fact that it allows us to grow as we need the additional capacity at the water treatment plant. So I continue to stay with the grow in place.
Excellent. And Councilmember Kamira Sulek.
I concur that the grow in place is our best option after much discussion, analysis, and especially since we can do the phased approach as we need it. As we've seen, that has been a very financially beneficial, both to the project and to our citizens and rates. So I think that's a big plus and I look forward to supporting that.
Very good. I think it's unanimous. Full steam ahead. Excellent. Before we transition to the last public comment period, Chris, between yourself and our communications specialist, Ms. Massey, can we notify council tomorrow when that water quality survey goes up online so that they can confirm to their friends and neighbors or post on social media? Very good. Thank you. Okay. Well, we transition now to the second and last public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may counter question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
I was listening on the mayor's State of the City address, and you talked about present and future, but you didn't, I don't believe, address the hotel. And that is a big problem, present and future. I think a council member asked twice in the last five months, what is the status? And you, Mayor, had stated that you couldn't speak at that time, but you might be able to make a statement in a month. And I remember the last time, I think Ms. Kraus asked, and you had stated again in a month. Now, this was city property. This was taxpayers' property. And I came to many, many meetings when the hotel people came up and, oh, they were, they already had reservations. And it went on and on. But the council did, in fact, sell part of the public land to the hotel. And I think it's important, there's many, many people that are wondering about the status. And I think it's time that the council is aware and also the public of what's going on or what is the future. I know our taxpayer, taxes came out again, so I assume the hotel got another bill. The other thing was as far as the social district, I do agree with Councilman Dillon regarding concern, you know, about topping off the cup with booze maybe from a purse or from a flask. And the most concerning is our police department. My husband was an auxiliary cop for over 10 years, and he always said that backup is so important because in this day and age, apparently, it's really true. When you stop somebody, you definitely want to have backup. But I'm hoping that as far as this concern of how much police time will be taken up with this, because that is secondary to the police protection of the four, approximately little over four square miles of the city. And that is important. Thank you.
Just adjust my timer here real quick. Thank you for those comments. Are there any additional citizen comments this evening? Please.
Mayor, Marrow, councilors, my name is Bernard Miller of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and now in Celine, Michigan. I would just like to say thank you for letting me attend this meeting. It's been my honor. My father was in this council, and now I know why he was never home. I also met with Brian earlier this week, and I presented him a list of intellectual property, some awesome names such as celine.me where someone can log on and it will hyperlink right to the City of Celine website. I also have all other kind of variations of that name where, and I offered to Brian that you can still host your platform on whatever you do, but these would just be hyperlinks, and I would be happy to donate them, the intellectual property, to the city. But they're good names like celine.me, celine.biz, celine.s. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments this evening? The record reflect, there are none. Well, we appreciate both of those comments. The chair, the mayor, has disseminated information via my weekly communicate to city council pertaining to the hotel, so they have received numerous updates in recent months. When I am able to provide a public update, I will do so. I'm hoping that that can be done in the not-too-distant future. We do appreciate your additional remarks on the social district. Mr. Miller, we appreciate your attendance this evening, and I have passed the list of intellectual property along to our IT Director, Mr. Shonk. I know that he'll be evaluating them and following up with you in the very near future. Is there any other business to come before Celine City Council this evening? There is none, then please note our upcoming meetings and the chair would be delighted to entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:02 PM. Moved by Mr. Girba. Is there a second? Is that by Seale?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Up to comment.